I guess.
Are we good?
Phones are off.
All right.
So that's what I do right now.
I'm showing six o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call to order. This city council business meeting is of Tuesday, July 22nd.
I'm ready.
At six. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Which way are we?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I get a roll call of officers, please?
Westman?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Daniel?
Here.
Davis?
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Toopin?
Here.
All right. The record will show we have five members of council present. I will look for motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
I will second.
I have a motion from council member Conley, a second from council member Daniel. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, let's get a roll call. Make it official.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Toopin?
Yes.
Five zero, the motion passes. I'll entertain a motion regarding the minutes of July 8th.
I move to approve the minutes of July 8th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Comments? Oh, I'm sorry. A motion from council member Ronnie, a second from council member Conley. Any comments at the table? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Toopin?
Yes.
Five zero, motion passes. Mayor's reports. I'll try to do this in an orderly fashion. So first off, for the public's notice as well as for council, July is one of those months where we have the elusive third Tuesday, which means it'll be three weeks until our next meeting rather than two. That'll be on the second week in August, which I want to say is the 12th.
I memorized the whole thing.
Yeah, okay. All right. They, we had a meeting on the EDA Street project here last week. Just to be clear, that was not a required meeting. We weren't checking a box. It was just setting and managing expectations and making sure the public was aware. As a result, some things that came out of that is folks wanted to have a more detailed map of that project, so that is online at the city website if you go to the current news. That is now listed as one of the topics and we'll keep updates there as they develop. There's also a possibility of, as communications come forward, we'll kind of put calendars and stuff. That project is actually just going out to bid this week, so the specific timeline is still TBD. We have hopes that we'll see boots on the ground this year, but there's a possibility that it may be next year and there's pros and cons to both sides of that. So again, that, and everyone's welcome to go look at that. That, the primary project that came out of the city is basically curb to curb, which does include the road in between and the identified roads, which were a lot driven by the flood and the grant capability because that's something we're doing with outside money. There are two things on there to help address sidewalks and that, some of that sidewalks, we are including using some stormwater resort tax monies that are appropriately used for sidewalks because that was one of the things we set, most specifically going up to the high school as the safe route to school and just because that's where it gets used. Also in the budget, we'll see tonight that there is a proposal that we are looking at including a match fund for sidewalks and putting some money aside that basically will be a first come, first served application. It's kind of like the city will be offering grants to get half your sidewalk paid for.
Do we have, excuse me, do we have a name for this program yet? I think it deserves a name.
I think we just, we just call it a sidewalk cost share so far is what we've been calling it.
Just so people can be familiar with it when we talk about it.
Yeah.
It's a great idea, I think.
And, and what still has to be set is, once we approve that in a budget, I will look to council to set the rules of that. Historically, what, what we've seen done is like a 50%, but I think also we will probably want to put a cap on that. So if somebody comes in and I own an entire block, we don't want to blow it all on one spot. So once that's approved in the budget, then we'll have council set those parameters and it'll be immediately available on a first come, first served until it's gone. And hopefully we can use that to help improve the sidewalks in our town. Rocky Fork, we awarded that bid. What was, they're working through the process of getting the flood permit approved. There's a process that will have a public notice and hearing. There'll be, there'll be an app that goes out and even prior to that, DEQ actually has to go through and see if there's anything else. Even though we're just tearing it down because it's in a flood plain, they have to, more bureaucracy. So I will continue to push and nudge that on a daily basis.
It would have been better if it were to just...
I, I know.
So you said DEQ and another public?
I said DEQ and I meant DES, I'm sorry. And, well, the flood permit is us. So DES has to sign off of before we sign off on the flood permit and there has to be a public hearing before we sign off on the flood permit.
Just one hearing?
Pardon, just one public hearing. And it's actually just a public notice. It goes in.
Okay.
So, so it doesn't even, it's not even a hearing. It's just a public notice and if there's no responses within 14 days, then we, maybe it's 15 days, then we say make it go away. We will make sure we send out a notice of that. I'm sure that there is, the press and several entities in town will also want to know about. That'll be a pretty big deal today that we're able to drop that and make it go away. I can report that the teddy bear has gone out of the window. There were comments and concerns and questions I had about the bear and it has been removed.
Oh, I guess I missed it.
Yeah.
Didn't see the bear.
Eagle Snaps, we are still monitoring. We, we have all the data prepared in a generic application. We're still monitoring for applications on that. And the only reason I throw that in there, not because there's new developments, just because every time we talk about Rocky Fork, the next question is immediately, what about Eagle Snaps? Brewery Hill, because that also comes up in there. We have that application and just a reminder, we expect to hear about that in October or November. So it'll be a next year project, in fact, maybe even two years out, but it'll be October, November before we get information on that. So that's just to kind of remind people about those outstanding projects that I answer the phone on regularly.
What are we waiting for in Brewery Hill?
The state MDT, MDOT makes the determination of who's giving the grant money, who they're awarding that to.
Oh.
And so, and I-
I know, I thought we already had it.
No.
No, 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 no. What we did is we applied a packet and submitted and done that. I, I will say, having been involved in conversations with those folks, I feel, I have a high level of confidence in our, in our package and I hope that, that they see us the same way. I think it's, it's visible. It's one of those where they get to tout it and, and show off what they've done and they like those sort of projects. And I think we put together a good package that allows them to do that with our project on Brewery Hill. City attorney status, I just wanted to provide group. So we, you recall, we did a three-month extension. Part of that was because we are, have been working, I have been working with the league. At one point in time, they had offered, they were going to offer city services through the league for the municipal portion of things. They have changed that and what they're putting together is kind of a list of pre-screened as well as the information to use to publish that's out there. I haven't spoken with them this week, but I did talk to them when they were down in town a couple of weeks ago and they told me they're nearing on that. There's a possibility we may end up bringing in another three-month extension in, but, but that's, that's what the holdup is there.
Because you're working with the league, there's no ads have been published.
No, no ads have been published. And I'm actually hoping they're going to give us that information that they pre-screened and told us, here's what you're looking for. So I just, again, just trying to answer the questions that come up from the day to day. We met with the flood plain mapping folks. This is the flood map that was due to be released the second week of June, three years ago. They are still, they'll have some of that data done by the end of this year. And then there is also a possibility that their funding may not get the entire project all the way through to completion. That poses a little bit of a problem for the city because we are stuck using the most current data, which is from the eighties. And so we will, we will keep rooting for them in the background and we'll continue to monitor that. But if people are asking, we'll have, we'll have some data, some table data. In fact, I actually have some table data now. And, and we have it in the planning office here, so if they want to come in to talk to Brian, they're able to get that. But we're looking toward the end of this year and then into next year before we actually get the new maps.
So if somebody applies for a building permit, they use what's online?
They use the nineteen-
The theme of permit.
So, so what's hap, yeah, so what's happening is there's what's called the latest and best information. The starting map, and then what they do is they have LOMAS or LoMARS, which are basically letters they get in addition to that. But the starting point for all of those is the map of record, which is from the eighties.
1981.
Okay.
That's what we're working on.
That's what I was trying to figure out, exactly what is the guiding document?
Yes.
Which truly is the 1981.
And if anybody has questions to that, they're welcome to call in and we will guide them and walk them through that process if it impacts them directly. Republic, you may have noted on the agenda, we had talked about last week that there would be a, basically a letter of commitment saying we had selected with them, even though we are doing that. They, unbeknownst to them, had a problem with their mail, so they thought they had sent it out, but we had not yet received it. And we did not get it until this week, which is after the packet went out. So I talked to them. You guys all, by the way, have a copy of that letter that was handed out. It'll be in the packet next time, so the public has a chance to look at it. But because that is basically a letter of commitment, I refused to sign it until council had given its stamp of approval on that. I did, I did let them know that the intent was to sign it as soon as we, as council approved it and that we had to suggest it and I did not see, I did not foresee particular issues, but that's the status of that. Bear Safe. The signs have, we, in, in the budget this year, which I know we have not approved yet, we allocated $2,000 from the garbage to help educate the public and get it out there. They are working on getting those signs printed and then those will be the signs that come in. And we saw those, that's the protect yourself, protect the bear coming into town and then secure your trash as it goes out of town. So that's moving forward. The updates, I don't have the updated numbers on the trash can survey. I do know that it continues to go up because it's something that I continue to do on each day when the trash is in our area. I found that the best day to do it is the days that trash pickup because all the cans are out and are ready. Anybody who's interested in participating in that, you can reach out to, let me think of, we've got two, reach out to Yellowstone Wildlife Sanctuary, NBR there, and get on that list and, and we can get you set up. It's just something you put on your phone and, and the Alley Walkers, one of our walking groups in town, does that and then we've just got, yep, so.
And Yellowstone Wildlife is the one coordinating it?
They, they're maintaining, they're one of the two contact points to get on that list. So, and since I'm not remembering it, Stephanie, no.
That's okay. You're not going to do that.
I apologize. I'm, I'm in trouble. So, so for now, reach out to YWS and get on that list if you'd like to participate in that. We'd love, there's 1,800 cans. We've probably got 300 done now. Public Works, 16-inch bypass, their pre-construction meeting is tomorrow. This is the water main that has been in our CIP for, since the golf course came into existence. Work is slated to start on the 28th. So that will get you the adequate fire flow up on top of the west bench. So that's starting to start on the 28th. Water, we've got a couple of leaks. There was one over by the county services building, which my understanding is has been resolved. There's another leak up on Silver Circle that you may hear about, particularly if you're Ward One. It is actually a long existing issue and kind of has to do with how they built it the first time. It's one of those where there's one line that goes in and it splits out with a, with a single curb stop in it and just has really bad plumbing. We are working on that just because of the size and scope. That's probably a multi-week project.
Question on that.
Yes, ma'am.
When are they turning off water? When's that project starting?
So are on, are you, so are you talking about the-
Silver Circle.
So the Silver Circle one specifically, as of this morning, they have now identified a turnoff that affects only that building.
Oh, actually.
So going into the weekend when this first showed up, the only place they knew to have a turnoff was going to take off 35 houses offline. Mike went through and looked at some old aerials and found, before they had paved it, and found what looked like a ditch and so they went and dug up and sure enough, there was a turnoff. So they can now shut off that. They can now shut off that single building, so it doesn't impact anybody else.
Okay.
And then what they will do is they will run a temporary source from hydrant that goes across with a, with a-
A bump.
Road bump and everything to get people over it because they're looking at, at probably like a week apiece for that. And what they're doing is there's a meeting tomorrow. It's one of those where we'll be putting in new individual curb stops and tapping them in, but it will be their responsibility to get it out. So it's kind of the same thing as what happened on Broadway several years ago. The difference is, is we, we are requiring them all to sign on and say they're on board before, before we move forward. So I anticipate that'll be taken care of tomorrow, but the alternative is we'll just put it in and then it's, they all get to pay for it every year over and over and over again.
Did everyone sign?
Pardon?
Did everyone sign?
No, that's what that meeting is for tomorrow. There's a meeting tomorrow to get everybody on board with it.
Okay.
Wastewater is still looking like September before we move forward. And then like I said, the EDA project is going out for bid on Thursday. And so we'll get some more timelines and stuff there. Tennis courts. While we do not yet have a formalized spot of where those tennis courts are going, there is a funding grant opportunity that has come up that was identified this week. The deadline is the 31st. There is a pre-application that is due by the 31st. It does not have any funding commitment with that. With that knowledge, I'm going to go ahead and sign the, the city backing. I said it's a non-committal. It just is letting them know that yes, we're in favor of them getting money from other sources. Okay? I have, if someone will remind me at the end of this meeting, I have some stuff from MDOT that was sent out to all the council members from 15 years ago, but I will hand them out to you all, just so you have, it's, I haven't looked at it yet.
Why do you think it's still pertinent 15 years later?
No, 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 no. The, the data is current. The address list that they sent it to is 15 years old. So I, and I was going to bring that in and hand it out with all this other stuff and I'm just seeing the note now that reminds me. I think that's everything I had on my list. Is there anything from council? All right. Hearing none. What we will do is we move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on anything within the council's purview. This is one of multiple public comment periods. There will be a light public comment period at the end. It used to be that we said, this is for anything not on the agenda, but understanding that some people have different schedules that allow this is just a public comment. On anything we take action on, there will be a public comment period that is specific to that public, to that agenda item, of which tonight we only have one. But with that, I will go ahead and open public comment and you're welcome to stand to the podium if you would address your comments to me. You'll have three minutes to speak your mind. I'll look first to the chamber. I don't see anybody jumping up to the podium here, so next I will go to online. Looking for cameras to turn on or possibly raised hands or mics to come undone. Seeing none, I'm going once, going twice, and three times. We'll close that opportunity for public comment. Again, there will be another one at the end. We'll move into the action part of the meeting. I will look for motion on Resolution 3710.
I move to approve Resolution Number 3710, authorization to submit an MSAT infrastructure planning grant.
I second.
Okay, motion from council member Ronnie, second from council member Conley. Discussion at the table.
Talk about this last time. If anybody has any questions on it or anything like that.
Any further questions from here?
I said if we didn't do it, we'd be the only people in, only city in the state. The entire city that wouldn't do it.
Yeah. So this is basically where they put together our preliminary planning grants and paper stuff and council. The good news is, is all the conversation is because of all the headway we've made in the last year. Our, our list of to-dos is dwindling and getting there are more focused. Hearing no discussion at the table, we'll go to public comment. This is specific to the MSAT planning grant. Opening public comment, looking to the chambers. Nobody leaping to their feet. We'll go to online. I see one open mic. Mr. White, did you want to make a comment on the MSAT planning grant? Or if not, you can turn off your mic and then I'll just know that wasn't intentional. All right. Going once for public comment on the MSAT planning grant. Twice. And three times to make it official. We'll go ahead and close the public comment on that. Any further discussion at the table? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Toopin?
Yes.
Five zero, the motion passes. That concludes the shortest agenda we've ever had to make up for. That was a really, really long one we had a couple of times ago. All right. For the public, the, the next portion of the agenda is we talk about things that are upcoming. This is the prep we do to make sure that the business portion of the next meeting is really, really boring. I will point out, just while we've got folks here, there are a couple of things that will be at the next meeting. One of them is the downtown master plan. You'll be seeing a publication and notice on that. And that is kind of, if you went to the growth policy and did quick here to enlarge on downtown, that's what the perfect, that, purpose of that plan is. And that'll be at the next meeting. Also, the next meeting is where council will approve our budget. So I'll just throw those out there and you'll hear some budget discussions tonight as, as we move that direction. Pardon?
Budget won't be approved till the last meeting in August.
Oh, it's the last meeting in August, not the first meeting in August. Scratch that. We'll, we'll have it as, we'll have it as a preview and discuss it, but it's not till the second meeting in August. At that first meeting in August, will we have our numbers yet, do you suppose?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's when we'll have our final numbers and know what we're working with and then we'll approve it the second meeting in August. My error, I apologize. All right. So with that, let's start with the Public Health and Safety Committee and for that I will look to council, or committee chair Conley to update us.
Okay, this morning, besides, I, I handed out the draft of the waste and construction waste change to chapter four dash one dash 16. And what you see in front of you, the things that are in red are the additions, crosses off are things we're taking out. For instance, on A, solid waste shall be stored in a metal plastic or plastic containers having tight, not fitting, but latching, tight latching covers. Then we added D, all attractants shall be stored in a bear resistant container. Containers shall not be overfilled so they don't close securely and containers shall not be purposefully disabled, which we've discovered that that does happen. We also thought we would add E, construction sites shall have a bear resistant container for attractant waste. If the construction dumpster is not bear resistant, a separate bear resistant container shall be available for attractant waste. It shall be an offense to fail to secure trash in a way that prevents trash from blowing and becoming litter. We found that construction sites, quite often, the workers will throw what's left of their lunch into the construction dumpster, which attracts bear. Bear, so now they're going to have to have a little blue hauler for their true trash. And then F would be, construction dumpsters shall be covered and secured when unattended. We felt that the fine should be $100 for each offense and subsequent offenses as well. And then that just added the effect of date of three. Any comments?
Um, I, I just have a, I'm sorry, a quick question. So like with, in July, when we have these huge weekends and, I mean, every dumpster downtown is overflowing, you know, because the public does not pick up Sunday morning and you have them not showing up until Monday. I mean, what, what would the solution for those businesses, you know, those restaurants and stuff like that be so that their dumpster is not overflowing? I mean, you can't really keep your trash inside your restaurant. It's a health. Yes.
I'll make a comment if you, the mayor wants. I'll not.
I, I, well.
Let's, let's keep it at the table for my mic.
Okay, okay.
But I think Mike, at the last meeting we had at 4:30, Mike said that maybe because 4th of July fell on a Friday, that there was a pickup in the weekend.
On Saturday.
On Saturday, because there was a weekend. So, I mean, it can't happen that we can get weekend pickup. And I wonder if it's as bad as all that, because I walked around and I didn't see a whole big problem. I don't know.
After speaking to one of our business owners that own three or four restaurants in town, that he felt that the bigger problem was when they took Monday off as a holiday and then that created a three-day. So not necessarily the 4th of July, but if the 4th of July falls on a Monday, then that's a real issue. And I believe that there was a discussion with the trash company to say, we can't go three days without a dumpster pickup.
So, so there's, there's a couple of issues here from my perspective. One of them is what the city's role is and is not. And I actually don't have concerns with what's been proposed. And the two things that I see are significantly different are construction dumpsters covered so we don't have blowing litter and a separate bear resistant container shall be available in those situations. So that, and I think that's an acknowledgement that construction numbers are not necessarily bear resistant. So, so what we're saying is it has to be bear resistant. And by the way, rather than saying you have to make, and maybe that's some of that wording, oh yeah, it says that. If the construction dumpster is not bear resistant, the separate bear resistant container. So I think it already captures that. The issue that we have is that the cities, or the businesses within the city are not part of that city contract.
Correct.
Those, those are handled separately. And I would propose that we don't want to become part of that. We don't want to get in that business. And to me, it feels very similar to conversations, I have, I have fielded calls, as I know the Public Works Director has, of, hey, we haven't got, we're not getting the trash service we want, outside of town, inside of town of businesses. Can you throw your weight around and cause that to happen? I'm not comfortable and I don't think that's an appropriate role for the city to do. So I think it is appropriate for the city to say, these are the rules and how to maintain that is a discussion that happens between the service providers and the businesses. Now, I think we ought to make sure that there's something that's, that's doable. Whether that be additional dumpsters that are brought in on, on those heavy weekends. I do have some pictures I took of dumpsters that were at 200% capacity.
Yeah, yeah.
Even, 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 you know, on Friday afternoons and stuff. So, so whether that's, whether that's, and actually, I think due to the nature of this conversation, we have a full council here, I will, if it's okay with the council, I will take some input from the public about what they think. If, if that's something that, that they think can be negotiated, because we don't want to put something in place that you're just going to get fined $100 every weekend. But I also feel that it only takes one or two, particularly those large restaurant dumpsters to, I mean, we have this, not to keep it nice, we have this for public safety. We have two goals. We want to protect the public and we have had people getting charged by bears this year. And we want to protect the bears. We don't want to be teaching them bad behavior, so we have to put them down when there's not a zoo to relocate them to. So, council member Toopin?
In terms of the businesses, part of me, again, I, I think a big part of it is that this is law. It is a public health and safety concern and I think that it's one of those things that you need to figure out a way to resolve that during those busy times. I mean, it's something that I have to do within my own business to where, when- I mean, it's something that I have to do within my own business to where when the residential cans are completely overflowing, I have to go unload those and store that trash until cans are picked up. So we don't allow our trash cans to overflow after guest stays. So again, that's kind of my input on that. Otherwise, in terms of the stuff in this ordinance, there's a few minor edits that I have that I'll just give you after.
Are they content or just kind of edit edits?
Uh, just edit edits, but specifically content related ones. Instead of city code, city municipal code, or something along those lines. And then the fourth, whereas, the people of Red Lodge live with wildlife and wish no harm to come to them. I don't want bears to get killed, but I can't necessarily say my neighbor does. Like, I think it's a little presumptuous and that just might need a little rewording.
I agree.
Yep.
Send it over.
Yeah, again, it's minor, but it's still just something that.
Is there some wording you can think of that kind of?
I think it would just be more so that the city of Red Lodge has wildlife coming, yeah, there's wildlife.
And this is a public health and safety issue?
Yeah, and we want to make sure that the public is safe and the public gets along with that wildlife, something like that. Where we can coexist.
Coexist, there's a good word.
Yep.
Council member Ronnie, thank you for your questions.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I guess I would like to hear Tom's input on that.
Okay, we'll, yeah, we'll go in for a minute.
And I know that we used to allow, in the spring especially, and in the fall, you could have yard waste in a bag outside of your dumpster.
Yep.
And so.
And we do have that in our contract for one, one non-attractive bag.
Right, but this would make it that you can't. So I think you need to allow for that.
Well, no, we're calling it attractant.
It just says, container shall not be overfilled so they don't close securely.
So we need to add an additional thing that says one.
And you also have in here that everything has to be in the dumpster.
When yard waste, non-attractive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, yeah, in the spring and the fall, when you're doing yard waste.
And I don't think we're even limited at the spring and the fall, but it varies as to when it would exist.
Right, exactly, so.
All right, council member Ruth, did you have a hand right here?
Yeah, I don't know, is two hundred percent hyperbole?
Oh, no, I will show you a picture. It stacked as high above the dumpster as it was in the dumpster.
Yeah, okay.
I thought, I thought they should sign up for a Jenga match because they would have won.
Well, I suggested this a couple of months ago when we were talking about this, but in my mind's eye, I can see a couple dumpsters on the south side of, say, Cedarwood Villa. And restaurants, you know, can put them in the back of a pickup truck and take them out there or get a little Polaris Ranger to pick them up and take, you know, take them out to that. It's close to the restaurant, it's not going to be stinky because it's away from where people live. And, but why not bring in, what are two dumpsters, and park them in that location and.
Any business you get.
And have a runner just pick them up in the back of a pickup truck.
So, I'm good with that too, but.
Any other input at the table before I take public comment? All right, with council's blessing and permission, and given that we have a person who has some experience in this, Tom, would you like to stand up and address the council, start with your name for record, please?
Mr. Mayor remembers that council on Thompson, I own several businesses in town. The, just to relate, I think there's a couple of aspects that I would add to this. Is that a business should have a dumpster that fits the waste they produce. Right, like, and so I can have a two-yard dumpster, I can have a four-yard dumpster, I can have a six-yard dumpster. If I'm producing six yards of waste, I should have a six-yard dumpster. If I'm producing four yards of waste, I should not have a two-yard dumpster. So some of the thing, part is making sure that the businesses provide the correct sized dumpster. Republic Services charges you more for the bigger dumpster you get and more often that you get it picked up. So I believe that is the responsibility of the business to provide for adequate dumpster size. There is an issue, and I would maybe just provide a little bit of input here. Republic Services are regulated monopoly. So as a business, we do not have much negotiation power with them. And so I believe your ordinance would say, any service providing garbage must not go more than two days without picking up garbage. So if you put that in your ordinance and they are required to not leave us more than two days, then that should be their requirement. Because as a business, it's reasonable for us to size our dumpsters to be able to make it through a weekend. Now you take the Fourth of July, like the mayor says, put the Fourth of July on a Monday. Now all of a sudden, you have a Friday, a Saturday, a Sunday, and a Monday. And you can't, you cannot manage that. And you have no, you can't call Republic and say, can you please send your folks up here on the holiday so that they'll pick up? You don't have that kind of power and you have the trash. So you're not going to close your business because you don't want to produce the trash. And it's not reasonable on your own to try to go out and get that extra capacity for that one holiday. So it's building that as a reasonable piece or having them, you know, bringing in shared dumpsters is a little bit challenging, but it might provide some solution. Ultimately, the business has to have adequate sized dumpsters. If they're on a regular, regular weekend like we had this past weekend, you shouldn't have been overflowing.
Can I ask a couple of clarifying questions? I think what I heard you say was, I agree that it's, the city is okay to say, basically, you need to have a dumpster to fit your needs and to expect the businesses to step up to that. The second thing I heard you say was, we may be able to make that easier by including a clause in our ordinance which allows them to deal with that in a situation when they might not otherwise be able to do so.
Yeah, or requires the company that is doing the trash, that's their responsibility. In order, basically, part of their business license to be able to pick up trash means they cannot leave the businesses hanging. Because again, you know, if you have, if Republic decides not to show up one day, my dumpsters are going to be overflowing. There's nothing I can do about that. And so you're going to have to go down and then you're going to be finding everybody on the alley because Republic didn't show up. It's really not our fault, it's kind of their fault. And so, and we don't, and we don't have, not like we've got seven different garbage companies we can choose to go.
You have nobody, just them.
Exactly, that's the problem. And so we have no flexibility.
Do you think that that clause could include or other suitable means, AKA extra dumpsters or anything like that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we just acknowledge that it has to either picked up every, not more than two days, or has other suitable means. And that, even that drives us back to, the businesses must have the ability. Well, except for that, theirs is a lot more intense. Do businesses have like one a week pickup, two a week pickup? Do they have different categories?
Some do, so you can get one a week, two a week, or three a week usually. And you can choose the day, I believe. Usually people either have Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, or Monday and Friday.
And do you think by the time somebody got their second or third hundred dollar ticket for not having adequate trash, that they would then call and renegotiate?
I don't know how to answer that.
It costs.
Or you're saying it's cheaper to pay the hundred dollars?
Honestly, it's cheaper to pay the hundred dollars. I just bumped my trash can up to twice a week because of the shack in the back. And it's just been really busy, and it, it went from two hundred and fifty-six up to four hundred and fifty-six, four and X. So it's an extra two hundred dollars.
And I know that's possible because, you know, Disneyland pays thirty thousand dollar fine every night so they can set off fireworks and make noise.
Oh, wow.
And that's just the cost of doing business, so.
If it's only during the month of July, yeah, I mean, it's cheaper to pay the fines.
You're still going to have some pieces. But what I would say, from a business standpoint in garbage production, where I would have told you years ago that, you know, we have two really big days and it's hard to meet those days, Fourth of July and probably rodeo. We had three days busier in June, busier than this past weekend. So it is all summer. I mean, so, you know, you're not, you're not producing that much more trash on any of those given days. I mean, our business is, you know, Fourth of July is a busier day. But for the most part, we have busy weekends every weekend or two, sometimes.
And I know we are looking at the business license process and putting some things in there that says, if you're going to have a restaurant, you have to have, if you're going to have grease, you've got to have grease storage, you know. So there's, there's a couple, if, if you're going to, different businesses, you've got to be set up to do that. And that may be the place where we address that. And then now somebody's in danger of losing their business license if they have purposefully, their business registration. Somebody's in danger of using their right to do business if they, if they don't provide that adequate. So maybe that's a better place to do that. Council member Ruth?
Another question, Tom. Tom, what do you think of the smallest dumpster a restaurant should have?
That's a loaded question. It depends on the restaurant. You know, I mean, the smallest dumpster you could get is a two yard.
Right.
So.
But we have a, we have a hot dog cart.
Yeah, yeah, so it's hard to say. It really is hard to say because it really depends a lot on the business, you know. So, you know, a small restaurant that, it is possible for a restaurant to be very low waste. Unfortunately, we do not have composting here, which could really lower the amount of waste that we put out. But it really is very dependent on the restaurant. You know, different restaurants have different things.
But it sounds like you're, I'm not putting this on you, but there might be a degree of frustration that so-and-so is not buying a big enough dumpster. And that's why my question is, what?
I think, I think it's, I think it's a performance based test. Can you fit your garbage in your dumpster? That's, that's really, you know, if you're overflowing.
The third weekend in a row, we need to evaluate.
Yeah, that's it, you know, I mean, and then you need to order, either you grow a bigger dumpster or more stops, right? It's actually cheaper to order a bigger dumpster than it is to do more pickups.
They tell me it wasn't, so.
Generally, it, my understanding and my experience is they would rather have the bigger dumpster less, less lift, they call them.
Yeah.
And then it is, so, so a two yard twice a week is more expensive than a four yard once a week. That's the way it used to be. I don't know what their pricing, their pricing is not consistent, not consistent for businesses.
They were going to charge me a hundred and twenty dollars to replace the dumpster. And since I'm only going to do it through the summer, I would like.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, so there's.
So it may be time, yeah, versed here. So any other questions for our expert testimony while we have them?
Just to add to that, it is, the most efficient thing is to have a larger dumpster. And to adjust the amount of lifts you get on the dumpster, increase it on the summer, decrease it in the winter. Then you're not switching out dumpsters. That minimizes your, your pay. And they hope that you forget to reduce the number of lifts that you do over summer and then you keep paying them all winter.
Sure. New dumpsters happen.
Of course.
Tom, is there, is there enough waste of recyclables? Or is that a torture for the staff to divert some recyclables?
Republic used to have recyclables, they used to be, they used to bring, have recyclable dumpsters and that significantly reduced the amount of waste we put in our dumpsters, which helped immensely. I believe they're required to do that in Billings and so they still have it in Billings. They're not required to do it here, so they don't. So that, that is a way to.
Reduce.
To reduce, reduce the amount that goes in the dumpsters is to require them to have recycling in some way, shape, or form. But again, they're, they're not willing to do it for us anymore.
Any other questions for Tom? Thank you, sir. We'll see you later.
Thanks, Tom, thank you.
So my question, as we bring this back to the table, is twofold. I want to, I want to throw one other situation slash report I had into here and see if there's a way that it fits into here. So I had a, I got a report this week of somebody concerned who was pouring stuff out in the back alley. And it was like water, but there was a concern if it had grease or melted ice cream or who knows what in it that would be an attractant. Is there an opportunity for that to be better addressed here that?
Depends on what it was.
Pardon?
Depends on what it was, I mean.
I like that we both, I think if we say, if it's an attractant, you know, is that a, it shall be against the, to dispose of attractants in the, in the city stormwater?
I think that would go into chapter one, but I don't know if that's necessarily something that would go into section sixteen, solid waste.
If it was a bucket, it wasn't solid, to your point.
Right.
Well, it's more so, it's, again, that would be like, it's not like you're littering, it's not, it's a nuisance. And it's a safety hazard potentially, but again, I don't think it would go within solid waste and how we handle our trash cans. Dispose, maybe, if we had it as refuse or disposed, but, you know, that's, again, just based off of, if we're actually looking at the code and what it is and how it's titled, that would be very confusing, I think, for folks to find that. Or it would be covered in the fact that solid waste and refuse should be stored in metal or plastic containers. So essentially, you don't get to throw stuff out in the street, you have to throw it down a drain. I don't know, that's, that's my thought.
That would just be like modify A, so solid waste or attractant refuse?
Or just, again, I.
Or just refuse.
Yep, it could even be.
We addressed, we addressed that it couldn't generate odor beyond the property line or allow liquid runoff.
Yeah, but it's specifically talking about the can, though.
Yeah, the can itself.
Not talking about the action of throwing your dishwater out the window.
I'll throw some, I'll look through some of that, what we've got in that chapter.
Yeah.
To see what, how it addresses liquid waste.
So if you have your dirty mop bucket, you can't throw that, like, through the back.
Out the window.
You have to put it down the drain. Okay. So I mean, that's what you're getting at.
It works exactly the same way.
I'm asking.
You have to put it down like your toilet sink.
Or if it's grease, you need to store that and put that in your trash can. Because you don't want to put that down your drain.
No, I know, exactly, no.
And this is just a citizen report and, and, but the assumption was that, that it had attractant waste in it and there was a concern in it.
I mean, I could see attractant waste, but.
Pardon?
Can I make one more comment, comment on that?
Please.
So two.
It did come from a block that you have a presence on, please, help him.
I will speak for the two positions here, Tom Kuhn's fire chief. One is you want to be very cautious about, you want, you want to make sure that you have an ordinance that does, that prohibits any kind of liquid waste being allowed to go into the storm sewer for two reasons. One, if it's grease, it will, can cause serious problems. I'm sure your public works director would tell you about that.
Yeah.
Also, even just along the words of the mop water. Mop water is, since we have, we are getting to a point where we are not treating our storm water anymore, that mop water would then end up in the, 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 the storm sewer, which is not a treated pit, so that's.
So we need, but don't, it won't, to whoever's point it was, it doesn't fit here. And that was you, but yes, we need to address it.
Yeah, you need to address it. You should not be able to put any kind of liquid waste out into.
The storm water.
Into the gutter or the alley. All that should be managed within, in the business, in a proper care, especially if it might be fun.
Okay. Was that, was that the, the fire chief part?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for that. So then my next question to council as a whole is, as you've made notes, and this is to committee chair Conley, but also council member Ruth, and council member Davis is not here. Do you guys think the changes that were discussed tonight are sufficient to bring this forward for action at the next meeting? Or do you want one extra cycle?
Let's do one extra cycle.
Okay. So we'll, we'll bring that as an update, updates for, for council, but we won't move it to the action part of the agenda.
But I'd like to say, Sandy, I think you did a great job in boiling this down. We've been working with this for months and I think you did a great job of boiling this down.
Well, thank you, just so that we can get to the discussion part.
All right.
Thank you.
Any, any other further input from public health and safety?
We didn't have the police chief there this morning, but we, we basically got, heard that there was lower traffic or crowd complaints. The throttle down signs were really nice. There was a higher officer presence on Friday and Saturday night. They were in pairs and I think all they had to do was give them burgers. So they were the right price. There was an incident with a protester using his sign to poke a drunk.
Poke a drunk.
Who, they apparently had a disagreement based on the sign and I believe they dealt with that.
And I would just like to clarify, that was not a witnessed or observed behavior and there was no action taken on that, so, but the drunk was not in dispute and there was action taken on that.
Yeah, yes, it was taken care of.
I, I know that, that the group that organizes those protests was, was really concerned and wanted to make sure that there was not bad information out there. And I just made the observation of, of what had been filed and, and that there was a possibility something had happened that they hadn't witnessed, but nothing had happened. But I think they will look forward in the future to, to help make sure that they are not contributing to that problem as well.
And that they realize that everybody has free speech on both sides of every issue.
And that was part of that discussion.
Yeah.
You raised one other thing I want to ask. Tendentially, I had a request to whether we wanted to leave the throttle down signs up through the car show. And I don't, and I don't know, it's not, just, I'm going to respond, and to me, it's, it's their. and I don't know, I, it's not, it's just, I'm, I'm gonna respond and, to me, it's, it's their call, but does council have any thinking, they think would be advantageous to leave those up through the weekend, or?
Or the summer?
Well, no.
I mean.
I think if you leave them up too much, it takes it away, but it was just whether they were needed for the car show.
Yeah.
I, realistically, the car show generally takes place right there on Main Street. We don't get a whole lot of the traffic coming up and down the hill anymore since they got rid of the drag race.
So, so we don't have a preference, is what I'm hearing?
Mostly, I don't think most of those guys are throttling.
I don't think it's an issue.
Throttling, yeah.
Yeah, it's not really an issue.
Not anymore, he has.
Thank you. Any other questions for, um, public health and safety?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, let's move to admin and finance and for that I will turn to committee chair Ronnie, who I presume will want to start with her guest and presentation.
Yes, Mr. Coons. Our chair of the resort tax, but, um, committee is here, um, to present the resort tax board's recommendation.
And, and I will mention for the, the benefit of of council and, and also the public, so council has a copy of that report in front of you for reference. Um, and we will include it in the packet for, for everybody next time. Mr. Coons, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, thank you. Uh, as the introduction stated, my name's Tom Coons and I am the chair of, slightly reluctantly, of the resort tax committee. Uh, and I, it's a pleasure to be here to chat with you a little bit about the resort tax here. Wonder of modern technology. Amazing how simple that is, actually. So, uh, uh, thank you for letting me be here, uh, to come chat with you a little bit about resort tax. Uh, I, I hope you're aware that we have a resort tax committee. The resort tax committee, uh, the, the having a resort tax committee was recommended in, uh, when we did the resort tax renewal. Um, the members are appointed by the council and the mayor, um, and we meet monthly. Originally, we would hope that we would meet quarterly, um, but it has not turned out that way. We do meet monthly. Uh, councilman Ronnie is our council rep, uh, and, uh, we have a, a great group of, of folks who put a lot of energy and effort into helping make sure, um, that, uh, the resort tax is, um, you know, bringing in the money, it is administered correctly and that really that the public understands what is going on with the resort tax. Um, because prior to the renewal, there had been a lot of public dissatisfaction with the, the resort tax and we found through the renewal process, just by doing education and communicating with folks, that people ultimately in the end realized that they really, really were appreciative of the resort tax and we saw that in the passage of the, the, the resort tax. Historically, prior to that, um, renewal, uh, a lot of the resort tax funds went to water and sewer. That has not changed. I'll explain that in a second. Um, but, uh, there really was a feeling within the community that we needed to be able to focus a little bit more on projects that people could feel and touch and see. Um, it, the, uh, we did a survey. The survey outlined what was important to, um, the community and we kind of grouped things into, to three groups. There were things that people were really kind of eager to see in the resort tax, things that people liked and things, people were reluctant to have included in the resort tax. Streets and sidewalks, upgraded infrastructure, stormwater improvements, um, a lot of that was education. Uh, parks and trails, tourism infrastructure, continuing to have things that helped make the tourist experience good um, was really important, uh, and the community pool. Community facilities, we talked a lot about, uh, in the renewal and there was definitely, um, they wanted, the, the community wanted to see, and, and we told them they would see things that they could use as part of the resort tax. Uh, snow plowing was important, water and sewer, community services, fire and EMS and economic development, um, came, came in, um, you know, in that, kind of that next tier. Uh, that, things that had more negative than positive, workforce housing, um, and this is actually in order, uh, property tax relief, um, which we found to be interesting. Um, folks were actually not necessarily interested in property tax relief. They actually wanted to see stuff get accomplished with the resort tax more than they wanted to see property tax relief. Police and protective service did not, not fare well. Marketing to increase revenue, um, you know, we heard a lot about that. There was a push to say, hey, we wanna be able to include community marketing in this. Um, and the feeling was we'd rather see, make the stuff more attractive, don't spend the money on actual marketing. Um, city buildings did not fare well. I cannot tell you why. Uh, city services, uh, enforcement and clerk, I, a little bit of perspective on that and local event, uh, funding and grants. There was a, this piece that we would maybe use grant, uh, use resort tax money to help promote uh, local events. They do that a lot in Big Sky and there, we, there you can see, that was the, the thing that scored the apple to the lowest that the community really was not overly eager to see us promoting, using, using resort tax funds, that marketing, promoting, um, promoting events. Um, prior to renewal, um, seventy-nine percent of the money went to projects. Um, fifteen percent went to property tax relief, five to the merchants and one to admin. And the feedback that we got is they wanted to see the money get used on projects that benefited the community. They wanted to be able to feel and touch. There were a couple of things that were, were big with it, uh, being able, the pool was a big piece, things like the pool and parks were important. We also made the change that that resort tax was, we, prior to this renewal, we could not use it for operational funds. And, uh, uh, the big example was we were able to build a, a playground, but we couldn't maintain the playground. And so they wanted to see the stuff that we were building be maintained. And although snow plowing was kind of the top of that middle tier, folks wanted to be able to, you know, again, we could buy a snowplow, but we couldn't pay for the driver. So, so to help support public works, so they could keep the parks looking good and operating and keep our streets and, and, and keep the snowplow. That was important to focus. Uh, we did do this in January. Probably helps if we done it in July, we might not have snowplow push, I can't tell. And, and, uh, even the merchants said, hey, you know, the, 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 the part that we're giving back is, you know, we'd rather see that go to, to, to project. We gotta process this anyway. And so kind of the piece was, we lowered the property tax to five percent, we got rid of the admin fee, we got rid of the fee to the merchants of ninety-five percent could go to project. In that first part, it was about three million dollars that ended up in property tax relief and, um, uh, merchants and in admin. Um, and so that, that, in this board, we, we get, you know, a full, um, sixteen percent essentially coming back in, which is, which is significant when we look at, uh, where we spend money. I'll come back to that in just a second. So, this is resort tax versus property tax and you can see the resort tax is huge in terms of what kind of funding it brings to our community. It, it, for, until that twenty twenty piece, it ran about even with property tax and then you can see that it has just skyrocketed since then. Why has it skyrocketed? Two reasons. One, we added a one percent infrastructure tax. So that's a thirty-three percent increase in what we were, um, charging and collecting for resort tax. So, uh, that, the thirty-three percent increase just on the basis of adding that one percent infrastructure tax. But then also economic factors have a big push into that. We're doing more business. Uh, you know, as we were talking a little bit earlier, June now and September are actually months where we're, um, businesses are actually able to make money. Our summer season has expanded by, by really about two months. We really go pretty well from the beginning of June to the end of September. Prior to twenty twenty, we really, really, it was July and August. And so, uh, there's been multiple factors on that. Some of that's been events that have come in, um, but some of it is just Red Lodge as a whole. But you can see that the, the, our downtown is really core to what brings people into our community and it's really an important part of our, um, a, a really important part of our community and what maintains our community. Cause while this shows in resort tax, it also shows an economic value to the community. It's wages that are paid, um, it is jobs that, that exist and so, um, you know, it's not, this isn't just about the resort tax, what brings people to our community. It's about the economics of the community too, that allow people to pay the property tax. Um, it also, just to point out, if people are telling you that our property taxes in Red Lodge have skyrocketed, you can honestly say it's not because of us. You can see that clearly in the graph. Part of that is even that five percent, as this money has gone up, that five percent has increased in value and so that five percent is actually, um, uh, significant as well. Um, so collections, this is based on the, the twenty-four year, which is last year, cause we don't, um, actually have collection numbers for the last quarter uh, yet. Um, although I'm sure they're getting processed right now. But, but what this shows essentially is that July, August and December are our biggest months. You see October and December as well as January and February are significantly lower. Uh, April and June look to be good. I will tell you they're only good because of June. So April and May actually are two slowest months, um, but June really has become a summer month. Um, we hope when you adopt the new version of the, uh, ordinance, the city will become more adamant in enforcing folks reporting months, giving up month, monthly figures. So we'll be able to give you better detail about when businesses buy the month. Uh, that it's on the form now, not everybody fills out the form correctly. Uh, there's a reluctance from, uh, city staff to require them to fill out the form correctly, so we're hoping the, the revised ordinance will, um, help with that, that process. Um, stormwater, uh, is a, a big part of what the, the collection pieces do and, uh, we've got, we brought in almost two million dollars in stormwater, um, and, and the community is very supportive of that. Part of that pitch for the one percent was that we would relieve some pressure on the three percent resort tax in water and sewer, so there would be more money for some of those other projects like pool and parks, um, a- as well. So, so that was, that was a big piece is that, that, you know, we were spending way more than half of ourself on, um, water and sewer prior and they wanted more money for some of the other pieces. We still say more than half in actual expenditures on water, sewer and stormwater. But part of that is twenty-five percent is guaranteed to go towards stormwater, right? Because that's part of that project. And obviously, as we talked earlier, as we talked earlier, the stormwater does also include not only the pipe underground, but the sh, the, the sidewalk and the curb and gutter above as well. And that was part of that project originally. And, uh, that, this project goes until completed. So this one percent isn't timed out necessarily because, until the project is completed. Once that stormwater project is funded and completed, then that one percent goes away and we would need to have another vote on another project. So you could, you could consider what would be important to the community. I know, uh, what we talked about at the time was probably streets would be, you know, continued with streets and boom, but it could be anything else. It could be city hall, it could be anything that you could, um, focus on that after this. Uh, my impression in talking to the public works director is, don't expect that project to be finished anytime soon.
Oh.
You may know more information than, than, than I do on that, but, uh, I think that stormwater project still has lots of work to do. But one of the things that is really important, um, is that stormwater project relieves pressure on our wastewater system. And so the, the, by getting, by continuing to pull stormwater out of our wastewater system. Same call. Um, we are, you know, also being able to extend the life of our current wastewater system. So that's a really important piece. A lot of what goes into our wastewater system is stormwater and so as we pull that out, we, we, we gain capacity in all these parts. So, so that, it is also about community capacity, right? There's room for growth as we do that. Um, so, uh, the, the resort tax committee considers, uh, budget requests and, and, and where the funds, uh, should go at the mayor's direction. Um, it, we built a balanced budget that allows for a cash reserve of three hundred thousand dollars. We also build into this a six hundred thousand dollar contingency. So there is a six hundred thousand dollars in potential income and then a six thousand dollar reserve. So those two pieces are not part of what we would plan to spend. If that money were actually to come in, we would push that to the next fiscal year for spending, although you could modify the budget to spend it if there was a, a windfall of some sort there. But the idea is it provides some, some cushion within the resort tax. If you bring in more than you expect to bring in, that goes back directly to property tax relief, uh, by ordinance. And so the, uh, goal here is, is to ensure that we have that money for projects. Questions on that? Keep going here. I'm trying to, trying to go as fast as I can. Uh, here's the detailed, uh, uh, budget request. It's divided into two sections. Um, so you guys can see clearly what is expected to be reoccurring and what is expected is just one time, one time fund. So you get a feel for, hey, you know, here's what's gonna, you know, just keep coming up year after year. Uh, I will say that, uh, when we go back to the income, the way we at least budgeted for this, we do include pool fees in the resort tax amounts, so they're part of that. So you get about seventy-five thousand dollars in pool fees there.
Tom, can you make that full screen or is that it?
I, that you guys can do that. I cannot do that.
That's.
This, this is a top and bottom. He's just put them side by side to fit them on that. Go to that one.
But you could do that if you, if, if it was a little, I apologize that it's, it's big on here, but the, the way that is, it makes it smaller. So, uh, yeah, so that is on that sheet, that, that printed sheet that you have and it shows those.
Can't see.
And so, so you, you see on that printed sheet, the, um, I'll just show you on it, so it's just to help out, cause I'm terrible. Something I can't find it.
I have one for you if you want.
Uh, you can just see here, so, um, this is the income piece right up here. And then the second section here, that is the reoccurring ones. And then the bottom is the one time capital projects.
Right.
Okay?
And the revenue, you have the previous year's collections rounded off.
That's correct.
One point four seven.
Yep.
Um, interest, the pool fees, end of year cash balance, so that you're carrying a, a cash balance.
That's an approximate amount of what was left in the resort tax fund at the end of the year.
Oh.
So part of the reason there is so much in that is this, um, uh, the five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar vacuum truck was supposed to be spent this year, but it's not done yet, so it hasn't been spent. So that, that ended up, it just carried over. It doesn't, so it's just little, less, less extra.
Okay.
Less extra in that, in that fund piece. And again, the, the mayor's direction is to be conservative in our budgeting and so, um, you know, we're not, you know, we're, we're not over inflating numbers. We're, you know, probably what, you know, you'll find that we will do better than this when the year is up.
And that's the expected contingent collection?
That, that's why that's in there for expected contingent.
You kinda think it's gonna go up six hundred thousand?
I, I don't think it will. That's, I don't think it'll go up more than that.
Oh, okay.
But I would say right now, from my personal business perspective, we're seeing about a four percent increase over last year. Four to five percent increase over last year.
The mayor was on council several years ago through that dip in the earlier chart when we didn't understand what the implications were of, of putting that in there and, and so we ended up giving back additional property tax relief, which is where the public came back and said, we'd rather you kept the money and used it. So that's why, you remember last year, it's like, pay off the pool early.
Yeah.
Or, or do some of those big projects. We have it built in, so if suddenly every week is Fourth of July for the, for the summer, then, then we use it and we take care of it.
Okay.
But it's, it's also, you'll note that, that the goal, and Tom alluded to it, is it's not something that we have a dependency on. We're not gonna go out and take a loan because, because we're anticipating that. So we'll, we'll spend it when we get, it, it's like the bonus, if you will. Don't spend it till you have.
Okay, maybe I'll just pull back to this one for a second. When we did this resort tax thing, we built a projection of where we thought the resort tax would go and it looked like this. So we have far exceeded where we thought the resort tax would go when we did this, which gives us additional revenue to do better with our projects, right? So, so that, uh, you know, we've been fortunate that the resort tax. So, so that, you know, we've been fortunate that the resort tax collections have been what they have been, and they continue to go up much more than what we thought, so what we thought would happen. So, you know, the, the pieces in that, that reoccurring piece, there's $250,000 for water and sewer, that has been there since the beginning, and when we did the renewal, you know, what we had told the community is that would probably stay there. There has been some talks about whether it can be reallocated, however, really, the intention was that it would stay there but not grow. So what happens is, that $250,000 at one point was 50% of our resort tax, and now, you know, it, it's, what is it, it's 17% of our resort tax. So, so it's dropped as our resort tax numbers have, have, have gone up, yeah. Streets, operation maintenance, as well as pool operation and maintenance, and parks operation, those are reoccurring funds to, to do snowfin. We have an employee who is split between the streets and parks, and 50% to each one of those, and associated costs with, with the work that he does. And then, parks projects are, you know, a big piece of what we, what, you know, what we do and what that resort tax has always had, so that number has been in there. It was upped by $20,000 in this year's budget to cover and give them the ability to do additional parks projects. I will tell you, they don't often spend all their money, which is fine, but it gives them some flexibility to do parks projects. And then if they want to do something significant, and then something like Pride Park, which we'll talk about, that becomes a separate one-time, one-time piece.
So that goes to the Parks Board?
That goes to the Parks Board, yeah, that's the money that the.
Parks Department, yeah.
Yeah, the Parks, that's the Parks Board sets that bill spending, so we, we don't set that spending, the Parks Board sets that, sets that spending.
And then more specifically, they recommend or make their advisory role, and then Public Works with council approval does the individual projects.
We do not provide any for fire protection, that was in there, but then removed, and street signs have been in there, and I believe that project is done as well, so that's why that's still two or zeroed in there. Law enforcement, there is kind of a reoccurring piece, and I had it in two places, but it was a little confusing to go, there, there, we have had a, a reoccurring charge that every other year for police that is for vehicles. So 50,000 a year, $100,000 every two years for replacement of vehicles. This includes some additional capital items that they're hoping to purchase, so that's why it's at $145,000. So that has typically been in every other year at $100,000, and, but, so I, I would like to get that moved, so that we understand what that is, and then, and then reoccurring. The vacuum truck was approved last year, ordered, hasn't been delivered, so it's carried over into this year. The mini loader is requested by Public Works, and their hope is to be able to have a more maneuverable loader to do snow removal with. The Resort Tax Committee thought that was a good idea. Ice rink has been something that's been talked about, kind of the next project. There is a grant, a pilot tourism grant, that is providing funding to be able to improve and build kind of a whole bunch of tourism infrastructure pieces. The ice rink is a part of that, so that's in there. It will be much more expensive than that.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you see that 400,000, is that the total project required city match, or what would we expect to see that number be in future years?
You know, I think there will be the potential to have it be more. I think the hope is, is that we could maybe spend a little bit more, another couple hundred thousand dollars in a future year, but I think the hope is that we can find other grants, donation sources to, to help fund that.
So that may be one of the one-time.
Yes. Yeah, 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 not, the intention is not to be reoccurring, there might be another capital piece, but there shouldn't be a particularly reoccurring piece.
And this is just for match funds, correct?
It's not, it's contribution funds as opposed to match funds, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then the mayor mentioned the sidewalk repair, this was an idea of, of method to get us improved sidewalks, as opposed to, and I think more some of this was, if we allocated funds for sidewalks, which again is something the community said we'd love to see sidewalk improvements, how do you decide who gets their sidewalk? You know, right? And so, your priority, so I think the idea of the match fund is, put some skin in the game, if you're willing to do half, we'll do half, and you'll get some, you know, so, so I think that, that was, we thought that was a good idea, and would provide an opportunity to help be able to figure out what sidewalks get done by how much people want to match. The EDA sidewalks, you guys have heard about that. The Pride Park improvements, that has been something that's been on the list for a while to upgrade Pride Park, there's issues with concrete and the flower boxes, and all kinds of things. And again, this is a big piece, mostly because, or primarily because it's the most visible park we have, obviously downtown, it gets a lot of use, and we really haven't put any resort tax money into our downtown. Back a long time ago, we bought streetlights, but there has not been a significant amount of, we, we ground the sidewalks, but there has not been a lot of money into actually helping the downtown, which is the economic engine that drives this whole thing, right? And then, Brewery Hill set aside, originally, our hope was just to leave that as a future project. The mayor asked that we kind of set aside some money for Brewery Hill, so that we would be ready that project, because our, our plan is we actually put money in, in next year's budget, that that would be a, a primary project, that Brewery Hill piece.
That would be the ice rink of the year, as it were.
Yeah.
And the question is, is that $50,000, is that our match on the Brewery Hill project, or is there more?
If that's only a portion of it, that, basically, in case, and, and again, that could change in October, November, if we hear we didn't get it.
Yeah.
Then, then that won't be there. But what we're doing is, we're, we're setting aside and making sure we don't forget it, and, and we've got it there.
We, we put $300,000 into next year's project budget for that.
For that.
That's what we were told to, so, I mean, told that we were able to. Questions, any questions back on that?
So, in terms of the input process, we have the things that are regular, and you guys should budget for those. In terms of the capital projects, again, you said that Mike Maples makes a, a strong presence known.
He has made, yes, he, yeah, so what we asked for the mayor is to have, the department head come and give us a picture of where they want to. Mike has been great at showing up and explaining, again, what he's been doing with the resort tax, and where, you know, so where the money that we're currently spending is going, and how it's benefiting the community as well as future needs.
And, and I will, I will just add to that, that I didn't push or articulate that probably as well. So one thing that you guys have seen, and particularly those on the admin committee, you, you may recall that there had been, in the discussions, 50,000 set aside for, for future police department, that's very similar to the Brewery Hill set aside, or the ice rink sort of projects. I failed to, when they came, what I should have done, and what I will do in the future, is say, build your presentation, go and convince the resort tax committee to include this and budget for it. The resort tax committee then goes back to that very, very first survey slide that Tom showed, showed where the public input and said, and said, yes, we, we feel good and we'll include that in our recommendation. Now, ultimately, it's still the mayor's budget approved by council. So, but, but at the same time, I think it's very, very important that we take this input, particularly as it feeds back to that survey, because one of the benefits of this group is helping us make sure that we get that resort tax renewed in the future when we want to.
Follow-up question on the survey, how frequently do we do those? Because that was, thank you.
So, yeah, so, so there's two pieces to that survey. We really, we actually have one drafted, and we have done, we've got stuck into doing the ordinance, and we did not move forward with the survey.
So I understand.
So, we will do the survey this, this fall, we'd really like to do that. The other, the other piece that, that does relate to this survey is, part of the thing that's important about the survey, it's what we built the.
Ordinance.
Well, it's what we built the ballot off of, and then the ballot drove the ordinance. So, you know, there's some things in this, in that community thing, that this was built as a 20-year kind of plan that folks voted on, and so, this doesn't mean it can't be adjusted and moved in some respects, but in some things you can't change, right?
Right.
You cannot use it for fire department operations, even if you wanted to, right?
Without going to the orders and ballots.
That's not in the ballot language.
Yes.
So, you know, so that, that's really important, but it is, so I think that is, you know, what we kind of said, here's what you're voting for, is important, and if we're gonna change it, we can, we can tweak it based on, hey, community, community has kind of, you know, changed a little bit in their vision, but if we're really to change it drastically, we probably should redo, redo.
Right, yeah, and that wasn't at all the intention, it was just to see where these priorities fall in, again, and again, which is that one.
100%, yes, we have that plan, we drafted the thing, we just have not followed through, so I, I believe we need to, we do need to do that.
Counselor, can you move towards your closing arguments?
Yeah. So, this is just the, the last kind of graph to, to show you, you know, in this, in this year's piece, we're still, you know, really running a, a little bit less than 50% in water and sewer, because we have some of those other projects, specifically some of the street improvements and, and, and the parks pieces, but, you know, just gives you an idea. But what I think is really important piece is that we are starting to see in the resort tax having the room, so we continue to focus on parks, and we focus on the things that, that really help the experience be better in Red Lodge. The one thing, you know, so it, it is that kind of tourism infrastructure, it's, and I, I'll just come back quickly towards the ice rink and this pilot tourism grant. The goal is, the, the whole focus of this grant is to try to increase those dips, so it's all winter focused, so that we can provide things that will help make our community also viable in the winter. Improvements at Coal Miners Park with sledding hill for kids, but, you know, providing something that they can do, even hopefully making that kind of an evening activity with sledding, having the ice rink, again, good both day and evening activity, it's probably one of the most used parks, it, it'd be, because, and it's the, one of the only community outdoor activities that can happen in the winter months. And, but then also, some of this focuses on that tourism grant, is Roosevelt Center trying to be able to get conferences and meetings that can come in, in this off-season, so we can help boost that when we have, when we have capacity.
Thank you.
Any, any questions from the table for Tom? Tom, thank you for an excellent presentation.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Hearing no additional questions on the resort tax presentation, and by the way, the, the overall budget is being modified to reflect those changes and recommendations, so when you see those in discussion, next time, that input is gonna be reflected in our regular budget as well. Committee Chair Ronnie.
Go ahead and talk about collective bargaining.
All right, so the, the next thing we have there that will be up for action next week, if council approves, is the collective bargaining agreement. So this is one of our union, well, collective bargaining agreement, let's, let's stick with the, the best wording for that. There were a, a few changes that were requested, there were primarily some changes around dollars, which we actually did not go with. The reason we did not go with is because we had made the change last year, are ready to switch to the bookends that matched our other collective bargaining agreement. The goal was to keep our salaries in line, kind of naturally and organically, without just going through and randomly do a bump for a dollar here and a bump for a dollar there. That is reflected in this agreement, I want to say page seven.
Yep.
That, that, that brings that into the agreement, even though we actually put that into place last year. Most of the changes just have to do with the year. There was some questions about some additional costs for specific roles. The one that kind of rose to the top of those discussions was budget to help with the maintenance of the canine. That's not something that belongs in an agreement, so we did not put it in here. However, we have indicated to them that, as that has gone through admin, there's currently 5,000 allocated for the maintenance of the dog that has been set aside. Again, that's pending council approval. On page 11, there was a night shift differential that they requested we change from 9 o'clock at night to 7:00 in the morning to be a 6:00 to 6:00. So I went ahead and did that, I didn't see any problems with that, it was significantly meaningful. The other significant change that was in there is one that we suggested as a city, which was on page 17, under leave without pay. Our previous agreement said that maternity leave, if you're a mom that needs to take leave, you got six weeks vacation. Paternity leave, if you were the dad, you got two. That sounded a lot like a conversation I didn't want to have in front of a judge, and so our direction was, they will both be the same. And in talking with the, the police department, it was basically, you've already stated you can do without six weeks, an officer can be gone for six weeks, and is it safe to assume that doesn't matter the gender of the officer? And they said, yep, and so we changed that to six weeks.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is it paid leave or just leave?
And it's, and it's, and it's under leave without pay, basically, if they have.
So it's not vacation?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If I said vacation, that was in there. So, so if they have vacation, they're welcome to use it, but if they don't, they are still entitled to take that amount of leave, and we will get by without them, and it's the same now regardless of the gender of the officer.
But it's unpaid.
Right.
If, if they don't have it saved up. So we, we are small enough that we do not fall under the.
FMLA.
Pardon? Yeah, all the FMLA rules and stuff do not apply to us, which is where that, where that would come in. We would have even larger problems on our hands if it did. So they basically planned for it, they, several of them bank comp time or vacation time, so they, they, the officers that have dealt with it have.
They've agreed to it, so.
Yeah, and, and they've built to it, so, I think, and the rest of those are just dates from there. So, that, the, the union has agreed, in fact, they prepared this particular document, and if it is, if it pleases the council, we'll bring that for, for action in three weeks, when we meet again. I know that part pleased the council. Are, are we good moving forward with that?
Yep.
All right.
And I'm done, because that's everything in time.
Okay. Any other questions for admin and finance? All right, land use and planning, and for that we'll go to Committee Chair Cooper, who also happens to be our representative on the planning board.
True story. So, yeah, land use and planning, it was already covered briefly in the mayor's comments, but, or the mayor's report, but specifically the downtown master plan review will be coming to city council in three weeks. So you have three weeks to read a 55-page document, not nearly as intimidating as the growth policy. Lots of those pages are just indexes, there's lots of photos and maps, so don't stress it.
It's pictures.
It's pictures, you guys, it's pictures.
With somebody's name on them.
A lot of my name on it, we needed more.
We did a lot of them.
But specifically, yes, please review this. Again, this is another guiding document, just like the growth policy, but specific to our downtown. Again, we have done many different group exercises and community feedback for this, but again, always more feedback is appreciated. We did have the public hearing, last planning board meeting, and there was zero input brought in, but that being said, that does not mean we have missed any opportunities, so please read through that, take a look at it, and again, we can discuss it at length, or not at length, but in more detail at the following.
And at the beginning, we have a definition of what we consider the downtown master plan.
It defines the boundary set down.
Yeah, which is very important.
And just to confirm, that goes, is that, this Thursday's paper swing interest slated for next Thursday?
Next Thursday. I have a, yeah, I have it.
Yeah, we've got a calendar in there, kind of making sure we, we hit all these things, and we do our very best to, to remember to look at our calendar.
Yes.
On our to-do list. And I will add, while we've got resort tax here, I'll throw out a key word so that, that the guys come up, that in the future, one of those things that we'll do is, is not just the department inputs, but we will expect that resort tax committee to look at our growth policy and our downtown master plan, and in addition to the department head. and, um, in addition to the department heads and the survey results. Again, making sure that we're utilizing that in long, in term with our, our big, over-
Oh, not all right.
-encompassing guiding documents. And CIP I will include in that as well. All right, any other questions for land use and planning? I guess I should have, did you have anything else you wanted to address?
Nope.
Okay, any other questions for land use and planning?
I'm going to lose.
All right, with that, we will go to Public Works, and for that we'll go to committee chair stand-in, Cynthia Daniels. Did you see that quick correction on the phone?
That was, that was crazy. Oh, yeah, so, let me pull up my notebook, what I'm doing.
Acting committee chair would have been better if I'd gotten there sooner.
Um, basically, it was a very quick meeting, surprisingly, we didn't have quite a bit, or we didn't have that much on the agenda. Um, our main thing, Public Works went over some of the things he was talking about. Um, mayor already touched most of it in his public comments. Um, we did go over the M-Step grant application that we all voted on. Um, parks, not a whole lot, yeah, it was short and sweet.
All right, any questions for Public Works from the table?
Nope.
Thank you for doing that.
All right. Um, we're to item ten correspondence. This is an opportunity for council members to relay on any correspondence, feedback from constituents, um, anything that they would like to hear, or, or even an opportunity to kind of introduce new topics of things we need to put on future agendas because somebody sparked it, so.
I did have one, so-
Council member, Cynthia, go ahead.
That is funny, thank you. And, um, specifically, it's for an additional stop sign, um, by the skate park and field park by the Boys and Girls Club and the Children's Center. So I'm not sure if that's a Public Health and Safety or Public Works, but there is just been a request to have a stop sign on Howzer, or I guess I'd be Villard there, just because why not change?
Villard and, Villard and Tenth.
Yeah.
Because we have a four-way at Ninth.
Yep.
Okay, so just, okay.
So wait, which is kind of the line?
So it'd be right if you were to turn left at the skate park into Ace Hardware.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, essentially that corner, um, on Tenth and Villard.
I'd only have the-
Yeah, it has one on Ninth, but not on Tenth, and there's just a lot of people that speed through that section, and kids are running across the street to cars, to the park.
Well, that would make it a four-way stop then, another four-way stop, because we have a stop sign going eastward.
Are you talking about, well, Villard is one-
So right where the Boys and Girls Club and the Children's Center, so if you're going behind IGA on Villard.
Behind IGA?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, cause I was, I was a block away, okay.
Yeah, so if you're going on Villard, half of the IGA, next block is the Boys and Girls Club and the Children's Center and the Skate Park and Field Park, right? And then you have Ace Hardware, at that stop, that's where people are speeding through, or where there's no stop there.
If, if it pleases the council, I will take that as an action item and, and take it up with, with Public Works and, and the police chief. And, uh, if they deem that it's, it's an appropriate place to do, then, then we'll move forward with that. If not, I'll report in accordingly, and then council can make a determination if they want to pursue it further.
Can I just ask a quick question? Cause I know that there was talk about putting one at, um, was it, uh, Eighteenth and Adams? And what happened with that, you know, where everybody, um, is, uh, uncontrolled intersection.
Oh, yeah.
They usually end up in my neighbor's yard.
I will revisit that, report on that as well.
And there was a discussion at Public Work, uh, at Public Health and Safety about drawing a line on Fifth and Howzer. There is a stop sign there.
Yes, and we, we are putting one in, that determination has been made. Um, at this point, it'll be just a line, um, going back to everything has to be scalable. One of the questions that came up is what happens if so-and-so says, well, I want a line in our stop sign? We decided that's something that's in the realm of doing.
Yeah.
And we're happy to do it. There was another conversation, just as an FYI, FYI, about a flashing stop sign, which I had concerns about for, for, for two parts, it's an inconsistent thing, and again, the scalability. There's a possible discussion, although I think it, it squelched it, about if the local residents all chipped in and bought a flashing stop sign, would we put it in? That makes it a little bit more scalable, but, um-
I know those people, they're not going to buy a flashing sign.
No.
They were all saying, oh, no. They were saying, no.
So I think, I think, I think that discussion has, has reached a natural conclusion. And the discussion at this point is, let's see what the stop line does.
Yeah, I agree.
And then, and there's a possibility we may also put stop words or speed limits within the road. But for those additional things, we're going to wait until after the road is newly paved, which means that may be next year.
Cool.
Um, additional correspondence from the table?
Just, Cynthia and I both received a, a letter from a constituent in Word Three, um, wanting the throttle down signs to be put over by Fountain Park. But I just responded that, you know, those are typically put at the entrances of town to remind people when they're coming into town to throttle down when they're in town. You know, we don't usually spread them throughout the neighborhood.
I do think they were some on Nineteenth, because that's a, a thorough present, that's pretty neat.
And I, I believe that's where the concern was, was Nineteenth.
Yeah, well, he wanted them on Nineteenth and Villard, is what he put in my, you know, so I don't know.
And, and, and those are, those are at the discretion of, of the, of the sponsor?
Yeah.
We can, we can certainly relay that feedback on for future, but I think that's the extent of our role.
Cause the city does not actually own those signs, is that correct?
That is correct. In fact, there was a delay in getting them out this year because they went on a field trip.
Via the post office.
Oh, oh.
And so they actually got lost, and they had to resend some new ones. So that's part of why they didn't go up until the latter part of the week. All right, any other correspondence? Thank you, all right. That brings us to public comments, this is our last public comment for the meeting. Final opportunity to stand and address the council and be heard on anything within the city's purview. Same rules apply? Oh.
I'm, I don't know if I'm, this is why I say my spiel, but I'm beyond town for two weeks.
You can do that during correspondence.
Oh.
Public comment, take that back, it's not really open. Okay?
I'm not missing any meetings except unfortunately Parks Board, and, uh, that's it. I gotta go help my mother celebrate her hundredth birthday.
Wow.
So.
Congratulations to her. And with you as a kid, that's saying something.
Oh, my God.
I was angel.
Yeah. All right, so, yeah, and, and, and just to be clear, council members do not require permission to be gone from town more than ten days. Only the mayor per, requires, uh, approval. We're not saying yet. Um, so, so the, yeah, the mayor requires, we appreciate the notice, but, but it doesn't require approval, so. All right, now I'm going to go open public comment. Looking for the room, nothing in the room, we'll go to online, looking for cameras, cans, unmuted mics, going once, twice, three times. We will close public comment. I will entertain a motion to, oh, what, did I see one?
I was just going to say happy birthday to, to Anne's mom.
Aw. I'll tell her, Jeff.
That's sweet.
Noted, all right. Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.
Enjoy your break, long break, kids.
Look at her.
No, I have seven thirty-six. I had seven forty.